This conference will now be recorded.
All right, good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council slash Planning Commission meeting, special meeting to discuss adult use or recreational marijuana. That'll be the only topic on tonight's agenda. And before we kind of get started and take a roll, I just want to, I just want everybody to be really respectful of the time that we have. The Planning Commission has a full meeting right after ours. I mean, I want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak if you want to, and that includes us, but just try not to ramble and take up a lot of time like I generally do. And we're trying to just be respectful of their time. So with that, call the order, please.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Here.
Councilman Noah.
Here.
Councilman Osmer.
Here.
And Mayor Malagro.
Here.
DC.
Yes.
I think they're all from the Planning Commission.
Oh.
Lloyd.
Here.
Perschner.
Hello.
Here.
Ben Wagner.
Here.
Gilmore.
Here.
Saber.
Bauer.
Here.
Costellet.
Here.
Worden.
Here.
All right, thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
It's moved.
Second. Yep.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer.
Yes.
And Mayor Malagro.
Hi. Thank you. Any modifications to tonight's agenda? Randy, do you need to do the same? Do you need to approve your agenda as well?
Yeah, we normally, just, nobody has any issues. We say it stands for the.
Okay.
Issues, no.
All right. If I bypass something that you need to do for your meeting, you just let me know because you might run it a little bit different than me. All right, we're going to open up public comment. Again, we're going to allow five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so in your live, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records. Tonight's only topic is recreational marijuana. Any other topic that's not on the agenda can be addressed at our regular meetings for City Council.
Evening. This will be an argument against the sale of marijuana in town, recreational marijuana.
Sir, name and address, please.
All right. Lloyd McClung, 580 Long Rapids Road. I was disappointed to read the Alpena news today that the fate of recreational marijuana sales in town could receive a preliminary go-ahead by the end of this meeting. I'm thinking, why is the rush to judgment just a week after the city council election? It seems a little fishy, but maybe that's okay. I just thought it would be something pretty quick next year, but it didn't. It's here tonight. This is the night I kind of feared was coming sooner or later. But as you know, it's, recreational marijuana is prohibited in town, sales. Medical marijuana, yes. Why don't you know that money's to be made, sales, business opportunity, and yes, tax revenue? That's all the stuff that politics is made of. And I haven't heard anybody talk about the dangers of marijuana, not anywhere in a public venue, and I think that's a mistake. But, you know, Lloyd, don't you know that beer and alcohol's been legal for years? You buy it in drugstores and grocery stores, and now the marijuana's legal? What's the difference? Well, I have to ask, how is the alcohol working out in the public view? Let's see, 38 million alcoholics, and alcoholics have loved ones, so that's 76 million, and they all have children, and so there's a game-changing effect of alcohol on millions of people. And some of those people live in Alpena, and some of you probably don't know who they are. I struggle with it, and I'm thinking of, and you know how you're a young person, you do things you wish you hadn't done, and then you later on, you tell your kids, oh, you shouldn't really do that. Well, you kind of make that decision earlier in life, and if those people had to do it over again, those alcoholics, they'd be saying, no, 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 don't do it. Although, medical marijuana, medical marijuana does have health benefits, yes. Parliament provides for this. Recreational marijuana can be and often does become an addiction. According to Freckle News reports, that happens in Alpena a lot. Law enforcement struggles with it. I know some of these gentlemen that work in law enforcement. Young people die every year in Alpena due to the overdose of some of those funerals. And why would we, as a public safety-conscious town like Alpena, a town committed to boys' club, girls' club, all the youth initiatives we have, willingly allow another addictive drug to be sold when it has a chance to say no? Okay, let's talk about the public safety. Marijuana sales in town would most likely mean more people driving on the city and county roads under high marijuana. How are those traffic accidents going? Is that going to increase the incidence of traffic accidents? How much harder does this make the job of law enforcement? Is there a blood alcohol test that Alpena police can determine? Just how high is this driver? I don't think so. And if you are the one that wants to know what the science of it, it's a basis for decision-making. I have here an academic paper, just one of many that's out there. They're easy to find if you look for them, and the title of it is Marijuana, Mental Illness and Violence. There's a connection. There's a scientific connection to this. Lastly, and it seems unreal that this group of people would vote to put that added burden of onto the public in a town like Alpena. Lastly, those young people who live and grow up in Alpena, they'll be increasingly exposed to this addiction. Such an ordinance is voted through, that might be avoided if the ordinance is voted down. You say, well, all we have to do is drive to Harrisville, and get all they want, and they'll be doing that, yes. But it's a lot easier to get it on chism than it is having to drive all the way to Harrisville. There's a separation there that I think all we can do now is say no to sale of marijuana in town. I think there's a principle involved. It should be, what does Alpena want to stand for? Are we a decent, we are a decent city with a concern for safety and medical well-being of our citizens? Or are we just another city that looks the other way, does a wink-wink, and because, well, you know, there's money in marijuana? So let's be the city of principle. Let's not vote to allow recreational marijuana sales in town because city government cares about our residents, particularly those citizens who would be vulnerable to such an addiction that marijuana is known to be, already mentioned marijuana consequences, mental illness.
Lloyd, you have another 15 seconds, sir.
I'm opposed to any new ordinance that commits sale of marijuana or any addictive drug within city limits, and I would urge a 10-year window so that this argument does not come up every year like clockwork. I would encourage every caring youth leader, concerned parent, church pastor, and citizen to stand against and opposition to marijuana sales in town.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to just be respectful to everybody in this room. No applause. No applause, please. And seeing by the large crowd that we have, Mr. Lloyd is going to be the lucky one because I'm going to drop this down to three minutes because if everybody in here is going to come up, we're going to be here for an hour and a half before we even get started with our meeting. So I'm going to drop it down to three minutes, and if anybody else would like to come to the podium, please start by your name and address, please.
I just have one question. Is this going to be in the news, like what I've quoted in the news?
I can't, I can't.
Is that being quoted in the newspaper?
It's a public meeting.
Okay, well, you know, I'll say what I'm going to say, but if people would like more details, I'd be willing to speak with them outside of this. My name is Ashley Rich, and I live at 1065 Pine Road in Alpena, and I'm a therapist here. I actually work with teenagers, and I graduated from U of M in Psychology, Michigan State, and Social Work. One of my specialty areas is substance abuse. I am a recovering alcoholic. I'm very pro this. I just want to say that. Marijuana does not destroy people's lives. Alcohol does. I've never heard of medical alcohol. If you look at Kelkaska, it's, I feel like that town is handling this in a very responsible, conservative way, and I would just urge people to maybe speak to the mayor there and see what they're doing over there. And if anybody would like to know more information as far as peer-reviewed journal articles and things like that about the science behind this and mental health, I would be happy to discuss that with anybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Reverend Joe Collins. I'm representing the Alpena Area Ministerial Association. My church's address is here in town on River Street, 135 River, and I live on Bean Creek, so I am not a resident. I just pastor here in the town. I have for you a letter that is representing the pastors of the Alpena Area Ministerial Association, and we detail many of the concerns that we have, and we represent those who come to our church and vote and pay taxes and are concerned about these things as well. I would like to read a letter written by our leader of the homeless shelter, and I'll give you kind of a quick listing of the things that are in the rest of this. We have medical reasons that we're concerned. We have concerns about the potency and some of the newer hybrid stuff that's coming out with large backlash from that and including some overdose, but lack of research that proves the long-term health benefits. The financial gain is also a concern that it's more of the driver than possibly the concern for citizens. The crime, violence, and black market sales that go on with this, including the fact that making recreational marijuana legal has not reduced children's access, has not allowed government regulation and inspection, and has not provided billions of promised tax revenue. We have concerns about the children, and we also have concerns about our recovered community, as this can be a gateway drug or a way back in. And then we also have spiritual concerns about how this will affect our community because of the stress and strain on families that result from addictions to this. This letter from Barb O'Leary Mathern, who is the executive director of Sunrise Mission, says, "I was asked to comment on the current city discussion regarding permitting recreational marijuana stores to operate in Alpena. I am currently the executive director of Sunrise Mission Homeless Shelter, but also have a long career as a court coordinator for the Superior Court of the State of Washington in the Seattle area. As a court coordinator, I work extensively with families who are state-involved due to addiction. In addition, I served as a liaison with a family drug treatment court. My wide-ranging experience working with people impacted by addiction informs my opinion about the use of marijuana. Many respected scientific studies strongly refute the claims."
Reverend Collins, you have another 15 seconds, please.
All right. Of people who support recreational use of marijuana. Also, she talks about the highly addictive properties of THC, and that people seeking help from the Sunrise Mission to find a path to independence and self-sufficiency are struggling to meet that because of smells, behaviors, and discussion of drugs that can all cause relapse. So I submit this to you. I would like to give everyone a copy of that. Should I?
You can just leave them at the end there. Sure. Thank you.
I believe there's enough for you guys as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I live at 226 Fair Avenue in Alpena here. I'm 73 years old, and I've been a marijuana or cannabis patient for 55 years. I use it for cancer, to fight cancer. I've used it as a, basically, I don't like to drink, is what alcohol does to me. So I've used it over the years as a substitute for alcohol. I find that the comments that are made tonight are very misleading. Gentlemen, there is no physical addiction to cannabis. There is a psychological potential, just like donuts have, and just like many other poisonous substances that we indulge in, but there's no physical addiction to it. And the combination, the comparison to alcohol, the destructive nature of alcohol in families is not anywhere, shape, or form comparable to cannabis. My own household, I can tell you this for sure. The worst thing about cannabis is the restrictions and the people's fear of it without really knowing what the cannabis does. You will not have a problem with cannabis in this town any more than you do now by having those stores be available to sell recreational. They will be able to afford to be in business then, and it will be something that they can do, and I won't have to drive to Harrisville to get the RSO that I use on my cancer. It would be a consideration as more and more people in this city find out the benefits of the tactics that these people are spreading, that we won't have to drive around the state to find this stuff, and we can get it in our own community. And it has been legalized, that we don't want to stand out as troglodyte city amongst an enlightened state. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I'm an attorney for Loom, who won one of the medical licenses here. Loom is very excited to build here. We are excited that there's been a conversation, and continues to be a conversation about opting in on the rec side. I would say that I have been part of this discussion in many municipalities around the state. We respect, there's a difference of opinion on some of these issues, and that's why we have elected representatives. I'm here to advocate for my client's position based on my experience in other municipalities around the state. I think, again, I would respectfully disagree with folks that think that you will have less of the risks or downsides of cannabis if you don't have brick-and-mortar stores within your municipal limits. You have it nearby, and I would take it a step further. If they're not already doing delivery at nearby municipalities, they can do that, and under state law, there's nothing you can do to stop that. So you will have all of the quote-unquote negative risks or potential downsides of cannabis without any of the excise tax benefits of it. The, speaking of excise taxes, the last time that those were distributed, that was, it amounted to $28,000 per store. It's a very complicated formula. It's not based on how much cannabis is sold at a particular store. It's essentially, the denominator is how many stores you have within your municipal limits, and again, that was 28,000 in the last go-round. It is expected to stay about the same, maybe go up a little or maybe go down a little, and the cutoff for that would be September 30th of 2022. If you're going to get the next years, be eligible for any of those excise tax benefits. So if there's interest in this, as we hope that there is, I would encourage policymakers to move with deliberate speed and work through and finalize this so that stores can be, you know, built and open by September 30th, because if they're open one day later, you're not going to get the excise taxes until the next year. I'd also just respectfully respond to folks that have suggested that this is a rush. There have been recreational stores open in Michigan for almost two years now. The first one's opened in November of 2019. So it may feel like a rush on the heels of the medical implementation, but I assure you that there are other communities that have been dealing with this for two years already and worked out through some of the kinks, and some of those best practices can be put to use here from the beginning. There are some minor tweaks with the proposed ordinance that I would like to follow up with and talk about, you know, in more detail later, but I hope that there is political momentum to move forward here, and, you know, these kind of minor tweaks that I would suggest. One, I'll just mention as a side note, one is, the current ordinance says that you're going to prohibit excess growers.
Kevin, you have 15 more seconds.
Okay. I can explain more to anybody who would like to hear about the excess growers. If you prohibit those, essentially, you're just prohibiting experienced growers, because the number of growers is capped at five, so any growers that already have five licenses anywhere else in the state won't be able to grow here, and you will only be allowing folks who don't have experience growing elsewhere, which may be fine, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, in my opinion, to exclude those. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else here?
Reverend Brendan Maroney, 129 North Franklin Street, Alpena, Michigan. Just a couple things. I used to be one of the directors at homeless shelter, and if we build, if we allow recreational marijuana, we're saying, yes, it's okay to smoke. And by doing that, who's going to build a homeless shelter for those who fail the drug test? Because they're not going to be allowed at a homeless shelter because of the failed urine test. It's a policy that you have to pass all drug test reprimisters to be in a homeless shelter. So who's going to take care of the homeless people that are not allowed there? I was a former drug dealer in this town. I was a former drug addict, and the gateway was marijuana. That was the gateway for me. You might say, no, it wasn't, but it was because it put me into the drug world. That's the problem. And the problem isn't the marijuana, it's the people, you know? And so there is health benefits to marijuana, and I agree with health benefits, but I oppose recreational, because you're going to have little kids growing up that their parents are recreational, they don't need it, they just smoke it because they like it, and they're going to steal it, just like I did. And you can shake all your heads all you want, but that's what I did. So if I did it, who else is going to do it? Then I took it and I went and sold it. Then I made money, and I seen there was a profit in that. So, you know, I wasn't going to speak here tonight due to, you know, my other job and whatnot, CHS, but I have to say, you really need to think hard about the long-lasting effects it's going to have on the children in Alpena. Not just the money. Who cares about money? Money is made every day. You have to care about the kids that are growing up in this town. That's what we have to care about. Screw everything else that you like, you know? God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for in-house guests. Anyone in the virtual room? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, we're going to close public comment. So next on the agenda is, it's basically labeled the adult use marijuana pros and cons. Basically, that's discussion amongst council and council. I would suggest that if someone from the Planning Commission have a Planning Commission issue to voice that concern as well, when we go, because we will be going over the draft ordinance, Denise is with us. So basically, what we're kind of, what I expected from this meeting is, is a consensus on whether council should have staff and the Planning Commission or anybody else move forward or do any more work, because we've kind of seen that happen before on other topics, not necessarily this one, where work gets put in, and then it gets to a meeting and it fails, and that's fine, but maybe we should have put the cart before the horse before any more work was put in. I'm going to be, I'm going to go first, and I'm going to go and try and be as brief as possible. I could probably sit here, anybody could sit here and contest almost every point that was made at the podium, because that's the, that's what this topic is. It's complex, there's data, there's data to back up everybody, what everybody said. This is my take on it. Everybody in this community has access to marijuana right now. What they don't have is local access to legalized and regulated marijuana. I think they should. Someone pointed out that you can get it delivered. Yes, you can get it delivered. As a matter of fact, it's free delivery if your order's big enough. That's coming from Oskota. Or we can drive somewhere else. So I am, I am definitely for having local access to regulated recreational adult use marijuana, and I'm just going to leave it at that rather than go into any, any backup of data or opinions I have on anything that was stated. So we can go, I'm looking at you, you can see Mayor Proton. So we'll kind of go this way and come back around. What's that?
I get lost.
I'm not here next door.
We can go Cindery-based if you want to do that. Go ahead, Cindy.
Okay. I kind of agree with what the mayor has said. Marijuana is in our community. It's here, and it's not regulated. And it's not about money, and I know that that has come up a couple of times, that it's been about money, and it's not about money. This is a legal business that has requested that we make it or put it in our community, and I just, I think it's time. I think it's time to have it here, have it regulated, and give people a choice to use it or not use it, and that's what this is about. Whether people drink or do drugs or do marijuana or choose to go for a walk or whatever they choose, choose to eat donuts or overeat or whatever, whatever we choose to do, it's a choice, and it's our choice to do it or not to do it. And I want to give that to the citizens of the city of Alpena.
Well, those who know me know that I've had some very strong opinions concerning marijuana. There are two family reasons why I'm very much against marijuana. One committed suicide, and one's schizophrenic. So the thing is, is that when I was elected, I promised that I would represent all the citizens of the city of Alpena. And so I have to kind of put my opinions aside at that point. Whatever we do is not going to stop the sales because the majority of the folks want it, or they can get it from Oskota. So in my concerns is control factor, that what we have to be placed, that controls for law enforcement or anyone else to make sure that the state requirements are in place, and sales, that if someone, if someone sits there and sells that they're not allowed to, then they get prosecuted in that situation. The comments that I've been receiving, because I did ask for comments from the citizens of the Alpena, and majority of the comments that I've received are pro and not negative against it. So I'm not ready to vote for it yet. I want to see the controls, and that's my main concern.
So, Danny, can you move your bag in the event that it's covering that speaker microphone? Thank you, sorry.
Here, wants to make sure I'm on the record on this. I think everybody in the community knows me well enough to know, my conservative credentials can't really be the challenge on a multitude of issues. One of them was proposal two in 2018. I worked against that proposal. I worked against that proposal mostly because I felt it was poorly worded. A policy wonk, I believe that words matter. But it did pass in the city by 286 votes. The legislature failed to act prior to that proposal reaching the ballot. And as a result, they didn't have really a say in how it was regulated or how we move forward as a community or as a state. The very same thing could happen here in the city. So the fact of the matter is the voters spoke and the voters made it clear that this is something they wanted. It's something that I feel if we don't address, they'll address. Just a matter of getting petition or a different candidate running to push through something that they feel they want. And the fact of the matter is, I also believe in representative government. And the fact is, again, the people in Alpena in the city voted in favor of this. The individual who I feel for the remainder of this term who stepped aside was in favor of this. And so I do feel that it's something we should probably move forward on. As a conservative, I like to take my time and kind of wade into things. And I think three years is sufficient or we're behind our neighbors. If you can, the fact of the matter is a lot of the arguments were on the safety, there is the accessibility. That's not the debate here tonight. The debate is whether or not we make something available in the city of Alpena that's available 20 minutes up the road or a phone call away. And that's just unfortunately the reality, whether you agree with, with the use of recreational marijuana or not. So let's say we move forward.
Well, I don't think it's going to shock anybody where I've been from the beginning. So I've always been in favor of medical marijuana because that's where most, the majority of the people were who came to me and said that medical was fine if it could help one person, that's where they want it to be. But everyone, in fact, this week again reiterated the position to be opposed to recreational sales within the city of Alpena. You know, my thoughts have always been of what type of community are we looking to create? How does this improve our community? That's what we're all charged with is just on that end of it. It's accessible, I get that, but does it have to be part of our community? Does it add value to the community? Does it, you know, improve us in a way that we want to go? And is this the route that we want to take our city? So I speak for the people that are opposed and voted no on that day. And, you know, I'm not shocked or surprised that the council is, is representative of the entire community. I think at times that we all are charged with doing our best to represent the interests of the community, but yet it was only 286 votes that voted in favor of it. So I stand with Danny on the issue that I've always said that once we open up recreational sales, my fear is that if we vote no on recreational sales, anyone who wants recreation, recreational sales in the community can actually put it on the ballot and vote for it. Again, they can do that. That's part of that law. Okay? But for those that are opposed, if we approve and we move forward, they have no way to go back and put it on the ballot and have it voted out of here because once it's allowed in the community, we, we can't take it back. So that's where I am. I've been that since we've had this initial discussion, so.
Thank you, Mike.
I couldn't barely hear the comments. Was that a yes or a no?
That was a no. That was a no.
For the reasons that they can't go back if we approve?
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Well, it seems a consensus to at least move forward. There is a draft. Everyone got the draft that was in our packet. The planning commission got the draft, we got the draft. The draft is a, I'm sorry? Okay. So there's, I forgot mine's on here. There are copies in the room. They're also on our website. Is that going to be just under the packet? Is the packet available on the website? So if anybody wants to, doesn't get a hard copy or if you're in the virtual world, it is available at our, on our packet, under meeting agendas.
Are you going to, is the planning commission to weigh in?
Yeah, well, not on the, not on the moving forward part.
Okay.
But on the ordinance part, correct?
Yeah.
That was my intention.
Okay.
Correct? We wouldn't ordinarily.
Well, it just said it's a joint meeting. If they have comments, I think we should give them a chance to comment, but.
They're certainly going through now on the, on the ordinance, correct?
I would assume that they've got some comments. They look like you and them are ready to say something.
Because the state spelled it wrong. Yeah.
That's the way the state spells it.
Okay. Okay, so Randy, what, what was your intention on the planning commission as far as the joint part? Anything other than going, going over some details with Denise on the ordinance? Okay. And Denise is on the line, I think?
Yes, I am.
Denise Klein, just for the, our guests, if you could introduce yourself, Denise, I appreciate and your position on this.
Sure. I am Denise Klein. I'm with Deputy Director and Chief Planner with the Northeast Michigan Council of Governments. We provide technical assistance to communities in an eight county region for all things planning and zoning. So I've been helping out the city for, well, I don't know, a couple of years now, just with planning and zoning issues. So I'm just here more on a technical stance in terms of writing ordinance text, you know, working with planning commission and stuff. So if, if you want me to just jump right into this draft, I can do that.
Yes, please.
Okay, so the draft, what, what we did really wasn't, there, there wasn't a whole lot of time put in, into this because there weren't a whole lot of changes that were needed should the city council choose to move forward with adding adult use marijuana. So most of the things that you see are just some adding the words adult use marijuana into your current medical marijuana licensing ordinance. Again, this is actually separate from zoning. So there's no zoning text to look at when we're looking at marijuana. You have to look at it on the licensing side and on the zoning side. So the, the draft that you're looking at, the text in red is what city staff had added just as an example of what this ordinance would look like in order to add adult use marijuana. And the comments in blue on that draft were provided by Eric Foster, who's an attorney that's very experienced in the marijuana industry. So I just want to point that out. There's quite a bit in blue and, and his comments are also over to the side of the document explaining why some of these things need to be, or he's suggesting to be put into this ordinance should you decide to move forward. And I can't really speak to that, but I, we thought it was really important for you to see that. So really there's not, you know, there's not a whole lot, besides the big decision, which is whether or not you want to move forward. It's not a whole lot of decisions in terms of changing the text. I'm actually just going to, I'm scrolling down through my document. I know yours is up there on the screen. Really, the, the decisions you'll need to make start on page four and five where we're talking about the uses allowed. So if you just want to, yeah, if you keep scrolling, it starts there. The table's a little off because the comments through the formatting off. That table, so that was recently amended when we updated the medical marijuana ordinance to bring it up to an unlimited from the cap of two from the, you know, the provisioning centers. So we basically just added in the, the adult use terminology because it's a little bit different than the medical marijuana terminology with the assumption. And again, that's an assumption. So this is for, these are the things that are up for discussion. If, if you choose to move forward, will you be, you know, will you set an unlimited amount of these types of facilities? And if you, and the ones in blue, and this is where possibly somebody from the industry could weigh on, weigh in on this, but the ones in blue at the bottom, which they prohibited, those again were, because they're in blue, they were the suggestions from Eric Foster, the attorney. So I would be interested in hearing from someone, you know, in the industry because these types, those four uses at the bottom, you know, I really can't speak to, I'm not knowledgeable about those. So that would be, I guess, something the city council maybe could request. So other than that, and again, I'm just very quickly, I know that we don't have a whole lot of time. There's, you'll see there's not a whole lot of red text. We cleared up some things like in terms of transfer of licenses and adding some language in like on page 10, reiterating that a special, it's a special use and that you've got to get a special use permit because even though we know that's the case from the zoning ordinance, it wasn't really spelled out in the licensing ordinance that, yeah, the special use permit is part of this process. And then, you know, I added in that, yeah, there's an application form that they have to fill out. And then, boy, towards, I guess it's on page 14 is where we talk about transfer of ownership. Just, there was just some things that were missing that have come up since that like, how do, how do we handle these type of things? So other than that, those were really the only changes. You'll see there's not a whole lot because the, the original medical licensing process was pretty thorough and we had already made some changes the last, for the last update that addressed a lot of questions. So I guess I would just open it up for discussion in terms of those, those uses. And then, again, I can't answer the questions about the comments at the side because those aren't mine.
Denise, we've got Joe? Kevin? That spoke earlier on the, on the topic of excess grow. And I'd like to invite him to come back. You might want to come over to the podium because I think there's a mic there to address that from his, from his perspective.
And maybe those three others that are listed there too, the consumption center, event organizer and temporary event license. Maybe we could hear a little bit more about all of those.
Okay. If you're prepared to do that.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, you can believe this or not, but I could take off my hat as the advocate for my client and just going to tell you what I know from other communities. And you're welcome to fact check this with anybody else. The, the ones that are there, as I mentioned, excess grower. I think some people kind of have the connotation like excess grower, that means a ton of plants. We don't want, you know, too many plants in town. That's a misnomer that has led to some misunderstandings about that. Excess grower is just the name that they gave it. And, you know, I, I think there was another provision in here where you limit it to stack of three class C licenses. So that's what I would recommend. If, if you're concerned about, you don't want too big of a grower, then you could say, okay, somebody can grow up to 2,000 plants or 5,000 plants or pick a number, right? But just having a blanket prohibition on excess grower. As I said, there's a state law limit of five licenses. So any, you know, established grower that's out there now probably already has their five. And if they wanted to grow here, that would be something that would have to be fixed in the future because they wouldn't be able to get that at the state level. Once you have five, the next one is called excess. And there are some communities that have just instinctively, you know, prohibited that because excess sounds like too big of a grow operation. In my mind, I think that's an unintended consequence sometimes of, you know, if you pass this as is, you're only going to get growers that don't have five licenses elsewhere. And that's not to say that, you know, those will be bad growers, but, you know, it, it seems to me if you want growers, maybe you wouldn't want to rule out the ones that have the most experience growing, right? And you would still have the same controls at the local level of special land use and make sure it's in the right part of town and make sure that, you know, they, they have a good business plan and, you know, water management and, you know, all those kinds of things. It's not saying you're going to give them to anybody who applies, but a blanket prohibition on it, in my opinion, just doesn't make a whole lot of sense because the only thing it does is keep out the experienced growers from applying here.
So the, the term excess grower does not relate to the quantity per operation, but to the number of operations that a grower might have?
Correct. Indirectly it relates to the quantity in the sense that.
If I have excess operations, I'm going to have a large quantity.
Right.
Is that what, is that what you're talking about?
Excess grower, I think is 1,500 plants or 2,000 plants. So it's the same number as a class C. It just has this name of excess grower. So if you said, you know, folks can grow up to X number of medical plants and, and Y number of adult use plants, that's what I recommend. That's very clear. And you're not going to prohibit someone from growing Y number of adult use plants just because they happen to have five licenses elsewhere in the state. And that, that you can accomplish what I think communities are trying to accomplish. And, and you can have a policy debate about whether that makes sense. I mean, if somebody comes with you, to you with a great plan and wants to grow 20,000 plants and employ enough people to, you know, tend to those 20,000 plants. Do you want to have an artificial cap that would stop them from doing that? Or, or, you know, would that be allowed if they went through the special land use and showed you that they were going to do it the right way? I don't know, but if you do want to have some sort of cap on the number of plants in town, I would just use the number as opposed to prohibiting that type of license. And let me just pause there. Any questions about excess grower? And I do. In the law, I'm sorry, am I?
We're going to, we're going to keep this between the planning commission and the city council for now, just so it doesn't, because it could get, it could get out of, out of hand for lack of better terms. So I'm sorry, but you'll definitely be available to ask questions after the meeting or after, if you'd like. So, so what are, what are the other options other than prohibited?
You could limit it to a certain number. You could make it unlimited. You know, like I would, like I was saying, I would suggest if, if there's a plant count in mind that you would like to cap it at, you could just put that in.
If someone else.
Section six on the next page, it says you can stack up to three class Cs. You could say that the maximum number of medical plants is X and the maximum number of adult use is Y. And if you have a new grower come to town that doesn't have any licenses elsewhere, they may be getting class Cs on the adult use side and not ever need an excess grow. But if you have somebody come to town that has five elsewhere, they would need the excess grow or they wouldn't be able to grow at all.
Okay. Anybody else got a question on that topic from the planning commission or Denise? I know what a designated consumption center is. I don't know if anybody else has got any questions about that. It's kind of speaks for itself in the title. It's like a scar, it's like a scar bar, right?
Essentially, yeah. And, and that's one that's been controversial and, and some communities are afraid of what that would look like. And, and honestly, I think there may be one or two in the state that exist on paper, but I don't think any have actually launched. And it's a tricky to try to figure out how to make this a sense of that of. So I would say the vast majority of communities have just opted out of that for now. And they could always change that later, but for now they don't want consumption levels.
I got a question. Does not the state law under recreational marijuana say it cannot be consumed publicly?
Correct. Yep.
Then what is the consumption center?
Not publicly.
Private property with a license if it's allowed by the locals. If you allowed it, there could be a business in town where folks could enter and consume and. Exactly. That's one of the reasons that a lot of communities have opted out because.
Okay. Jesse, you had some.
Yeah. I take it because of your position in the industry, you work in, you're familiar with House Bills 5300 through 5302, which is currently going through the legislature, you know, like caregivers?
Yep.
How can you speak to what might be coming down the pipe? That's not really my, my side. I know people have been talking about it, but I don't really look into it. Is this going to be something that might get passed effect? Maybe what we would consider as far as putting this cap some.
My, my two cents, I think most, in terms of handicapping the odds of that, it's past. It seems like it's a, it's unlikely. It may still happen. As it currently exists, I don't think it affects anything about, you know, the issues we're talking about tonight. Essentially, there, there's a, that's a big controversy. And, and the client that I'm here about tonight is agnostic on, on that issue and, and doesn't want to change the caregiver rules. But anyway, it's, it's kind of a controversial issue. But in a nutshell, that would require the caregiver's product to go through the same testing and put a lower cap on the number of plants they could grow for their patients. But it would not affect the retail stores or medical or recreational.
Okay. The next one was marijuana event organizer. Kind of speaks for itself as well, as far as events.
Yeah, the event organizer and temporary event license kind of go hand in hand. The event organizer is, is a person or an entity that could be approved to organize events. And this is another one that, you know, some communities have dipped their toe in and it's trying, but it's more adventurous than most communities. Because that's, again, one of the things that, you know, somebody can drive 20 minutes to the next town if, if they want to do that. And that's different than having just reliable, safe access to brick and mortar stores and nearby. and, and that's different than having just reliable, safe access to brick and mortar stores and nearby.
All right, talking about event sales outside of the.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's sales or is it?
It would be, yeah, so, so I believe there have been two or three in the state so far. Um, you know, like a, a concert where you go and there's an area where you can buy and consume uh and be in a public place. And it, it's for a limited amount of time, um, and again, it's all approved by the law, like, you can't go rogue and do this.
I'd like to see that in writing from the state authorizing it.
Well, unless any, unless anybody is like pro events, we'll just leave it as prohibited and then we already won't.
I, not for what I, and I, I devoured state law concerning it. Uh, 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 that, that doesn't give us right now any option in that situation.
Option to prevent that from happening?
Option of sales outside of controlled facilities.
The, the, there, you, that would not be allowed unless you affirmatively allowed it to happen.
How can we sit there and go against what the state law says?
The, that's, that's the provision that you can opt out entirely, you could say no adult use at all, or you could limit it. Um, I, I'm having to talk to you offline, but there, it, it's very clear that municipalities can prohibit it entirely or they can decide what licenses, you know, say you only want brick and mortar stores, but you don't want growers or you don't want processors or you don't want event licenses, you can pick and choose what.
That's not what I'm catching from this.
Danny, I think Danny's saying that he's never read anything in the state law that allows an event outside of a brick and mortar.
That's correct. Um, so the, that's because the, these licenses that we're talking about here are the ones that the MRA created under their authority under Merkma, um, I'm sorry, Michigan Regulation Taxation of Marijuana Act. That it, it gave the agency the flexibility to come up with um other licenses that weren't in the initiated law. Um, and so the event organizer, temporary um consumption and, and excess grower were all ones that were added that aren't mentioned specifically in the statute, but they were promulgated by rules.
I don't like that idea.
And, and to be clear, I wasn't advocating for those, I, I think, you know.
Right.
Those are the minority around the state.
Yeah, I appreciate it and your explanation is appreciated as well. Um, does anybody else have any questions for Kevin while he's right here? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. So Denise, um, so the biggest, the biggest determination that these two, two groups need to make are probably have more to do with, with how much we allow, uh, is that correct?
Yeah, that, that, that table right there is what, you know, city staff would need some feedback on in terms of if you want to allow the unlimited on the adult use side, should you even choose to move forward? And I think what I'm hearing is those last three are probably going to remain prohibited and maybe you need to talk about the excess grower, maybe you want to change that. So I think, you know, city staff just needs direction on what changes to make there.
Okay. Does anybody got any, any specific questions? I don't want to jump over anybody, but the numbers that you did plug into the table came from where? The numbers that are currently in the table?
Oh. They came from the definitions of like the, the, the class A, class B, just how they're defined, so.
Okay.
And then the unlimited is just a, based on the fact that you have unlimited for medical.
Gotcha.
Yeah, you could limit the number of any of these if you wanted to.
Correct.
Yeah. More prohibitive as well.
Can you? Can you pick and choose what you prohibit, like, like we did? I know, I know you can with medical, but I guess I'm question, I, I've been questioning whether with recreational, ca, can you? Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I got it, and I, absolutely. Sorry. Okay. All right. Anything else, any other, any other major discussion, planning commission, do you want? Do you need time to weigh in on a recommendation of the, of, of what's on the chart, what's on the table? Or have you are, have you already seen this long enough to weigh in now? I don't want to rush anybody to a decision.
Would, I'd ask each one of my fellow commissioners, I, I have an opinion, but that's my opinion. Comments?
Well, just uh hearing the numbers and actually a, a definition of excess grower, what that is. If we're going to come up with a specific number, I think if you want planning commission to come up with that or for a discussion, I, unless we're, we're ready to go tonight.
I don't, so the, it's, I don't have an issue with the other, with, with everything in the table, um, or anything in the table. I, the excess grower, I, I guess I kind of want to maybe look into it a little bit more. I, I understand what you're saying, what Kevin was saying is that it's not in excess of what they have in Alpena because we've already limited them or unlimited them based on the, on the chart. Uh, but it's what they, how many businesses are, they have elsewhere in the state. Is that correct?
Correct, I mean, to maybe put it in a different wor, way, I, I honestly objectively cannot see a benefit to prohibiting a blanket prohibition of that. Um, because the, the only thing that that accomplishes is making sure that someone who has five licenses elsewhere will never be able to grow here.
I understand. So, so outside of prohibited, what are our options?
You could make it one, two, five, 10, unlimited, what, I mean, whatever.
Yes. It still seems, to me, it seems as though there is, I, I don't want to put a number, I don't know if I want to put a number on that either. Um, I don't know that I want to put a number on that. Because any number I throw out there would, that I would suggest or anybody would suggest would just be a number, not even knowing whether we would ever get to that number or whether we get to that number and it's, and we've handcuffed ourselves to come back here and change it because there's no, no reason why there shouldn't be four and we picked three.
And I don't, we would have to look at the reasoning.
I can re, uh, do that if we decided it's just going totally out of the way here and, and we can bring it back in under the ordinance, I guess, if it just seems like it's too bit, too much.
Well, if we pick, if we were to say that it's, we're going to limit it to five, so five growers throughout the state that already have in excess of five licenses come to Alpena, can't even imagine, but, but then, and we got to five and we're, we wouldn't be able to say, okay, we got to get rid of two of you because we want to make it three now. But if the sixth one came and we didn't see any issue with the five that we already have, then we could make it six. Am I correct?
Right.
I'm looking at.
So.
You can't go back.
Um. And I don't know, I mean, I, not that it's that helpful, but I don't know any community anywhere near us that it, that has, that has like, that these things are popping up like crazy and there's a grow in Harrisville and there's soon to be a grow in Rogers City, Town, Rogers Township, excuse me. And that's, and they've been allowed to do this for several years now, so, I mean, I just, I don't see Al, Alpena, especially with the amount of, of zoning areas that we have to even put these, we're already kind of restricted on how many there can be, so. Um, just kind of open to whatever anybody suggests, but we're already, we're already kind of locked as to how many of anything we can have. Just, just solely based on the amount of room we have.
Yeah, like if we added a number, uh, with the information we have right now, it'd be arbitrary.
Right.
Number for the sake of.
Right, I agree.
I don't want to, I, I don't, it doesn't sound like anything I'd want to prohibit. Is, is, does anybody have like an issue to prohibit that from happening? So it might come down to just throwing an arbitrary number on it unless somebody won't, unless, unless there's, unless there's enough support to limit it for some, any particular reason. Because you're not limiting how many we have, we're limiting how many they have somewhere else. I don't know why they would even have done that other than maybe to, to try and, try and prohibit a statewide monopoly perhaps of one grower becoming a superstore without naming any superstores. So.
Would this excess grow be a stack or two?
It could be.
Well, that five could be 10, could be 15.
Do you want me to try and get a little more information on it?
I think that it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, you know, being posed originally, but hearing it, it sounds like those that are even in favor are a little bit confused on what they should do with this. I think that definitely sounds like, and I don't mean to speak for us to counsel, you know, but I'm just thinking from my seat, it just sounds like we need a little bit more information and, and what we could do or some information on what other communities, maybe not of similar size, but of, you know, uh, throughout the state of Michigan have done. To give us a little bit of a guideline.
Sounds fair.
Fair. It's not, yeah.
It's nothing we have to do now.
That's one we're going to highlight. Okay. Anything else glaring? All right, well, that sounds, so step forward, okay, step forward. All right, um, I'm gonna, so, so our last, our last item was a potential action and I'm going to refer to Bill um, on whether he, you set through the meeting, whether you think that um staff needs a vote or does this warrant a vote to, to move forward? Um, just so we're clear or anything or?
No, I think you clearly, you know, told us where you're at, you, you want us to keep forward. Uh, it's just a matter of how quick do you want it? You, uh, for first reading, so do you want first reading at the next meeting or do you, you've got, do you have a longer timeline?
So our next meeting is on the 15th, which is.
Monday.
This coming Monday. And um, what's that?
That's a little soon.
It's, yeah.
Is that a little soon for you?
It, it is, maybe just a little bit.
Nothing for your boss. Copy and paste it from, from this agenda on a.
It depends on whether or not we have, you know, changes and, and further information to correct.
Okay, that's fine, that's fair enough.
There are just, uh, you know, there were some comments there from Eric Foster as well, those were just comments that.
Yeah, they were right.
So I guess, you know, uh, it, it didn't say that those have to be in there, but there was just some comments that he thought both should be considered. So if there are other things that council wants staff to give you more information on or more consideration, then that's going to slow it down a little bit as well.
But certainly if you want this draft on the next, you know, we could clean it up and have it on the next agenda for our first reading.
I would, um, I thought Mr. Foster's comments were, seemed warranted, they seemed, they seemed um wise just from my perspective. Um, so, so I don't know if, so what you're saying is those aren't necessarily in our current draft, those, or are, they were.
They're not in our, uh, in our medical ordinance. Well, he was suggesting that, uh, and, you know, Kevin can probably speak to this as well. I mean, obviously there's been litigation across the state and there's been, uh, you know, some litigation that stood for the proposal that if you got a medical license, you're automatically get a, adult use if the municipality allows adult use. And then the, the counter argument is no, and one of Mr. Foster's suggestion is to uh basically say that we're not grandfathering in those med, medical facilities, those medical facilities don't automatically get an adult use. They still got to convince us that we should give them an adult use. So that's, that's one thing and there's, you know, there's arguments on both sides and that I don't believe there's a court of appeals decision in the state that has clearly said that you can or cannot do that. So it was a suggestion uh that you can do that, but it wasn't a mandate that you have to do that.
Right, so.
I didn't think that was particularly sensible language, though.
Yeah.
That language, I thought was.
I agree.
Okay.
I'm being an attorney myself, I, I felt that way also, probably maybe not with quite as much confidence.
Well, with an attorney on both commissions and the council, I guess, um, and they both felt that, I, I would take your lead um, from the planning commission and, and from Bill here on, on what language Mr. Foster suggested as to whether we leave that in there or not.
Okay.
And, um, you know, why, why don't we give you some time?
Second meeting in December.
So, first meeting in December seems like plenty of time, it'll be the 6th of December. That sound fair enough, everyone?
That's good.
Well, they have a fantastic end to serve. Of that, that's all we have on our agenda, we'll allow the planning commission to continue. Okay, I move you to your.